...has that next semester of the 16th of July on the district calendar. So basically, thank you, the true senior.
Yes.
So. She finally realized. I didn't forget about it. It's on the list. Along with a lot of.
Have we moved around anybody yet or what?
I'll get there.
How is it still there? I thought we mixed all this stuff up.
And I'm gonna get a whole new picture.
I thought we were doing a reset here.
You are in here, right? Is this me?
Yes, you are. See, you're gonna have to behave yourself. You're sitting next to me.
No requests to stay on the end?
Um, Jim said that's what he likes, and I think he's right.
He likes, um.
You can seat down the line.
Happy summer.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Especially when he's sitting next to me because I'm short and I sit up a lot.
Uh huh.
Because I can't reach the ground when I sit back.
Trials and tribulations.
Yes, yes. That's my issue. All right, this is right in my face though. I know, I'm making right in my face.
Have to be able to at least open my laptop.
Right. Been so long, I kind of forget how to do this.
Hello, Joan.
Xavier, you and I are gonna be able to.
You?
Sit right down.
Uh oh. I'm scared. What did I sign myself up for?
Right, see now, you're naked. Am I getting kicked out?
Are we done yet?
Yeah, almost. Here we go. Good evening, everybody. Oh, wow, hello. Okay. We're glad you all joined us for the meeting. I need a motion to go into public session to rejoin. And I will adjourn, exact, and go into public. Xavier and Tom, is that?
Christine.
Christine, I'm sorry. Christine, all in favor? Michelle, too?
Sorry.
Great, okay. Please join us in saying the pledge.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, just quickly, in the case of an emergency, just make note of where the exits are and please find your way to them carefully and calmly. Also, just a reminder that we are a smoke-free school district. There is no smoking anywhere on the school property. Okay, this is still me, isn't it? Okay, we are at the Board of Education Reorganization Meeting, minutes of July 8, 2019. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved minutes from the reorganization meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated July 8, 2019. Can I get a motion, please? Xavier, and a second. Now, that was Tom. All in favor? Excellent, thank you. Okay, this is the meeting minutes of July 8. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved minutes from the meeting of Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated July 8, 2019. I'm looking for a motion. Christine, and a second. Michelle, how lovely, all in favor? That reminds me, actually, we welcome Michelle aboard our Board of Education table. We are so pleased and honored to have you. And I also would like to point out that, um, so Linda Gant couldn't be here tonight. She's away. And also, Mr. Dwyer couldn't be here tonight. He had a work engagement. Okay, this is an FYI of budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds as of 7/31/19. We also have an FYI of budget transfers, an FYI of revenue status report as of 7/31/19, and that brings us to the warrants. So, there we go. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants which were certified for payment on July 17, 2019, and July 31, 2019. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, and a second. Xavier, all in favor? Thank you. All right, my friends, that brings us to Board Member Communication and Announcements. I, you know, we're deep in summer. Has anybody been doing anything that you want to mention? Excellent, thank you.
Okay, first, I want to just say that there's been a great program going on at Washington Primary for our senior school year students, and we've been having lots of fun planning. SEPTA has been having lots of fun planning great activities for them. Last Friday, we had a petting zoo, and this week, we're having a puppet show about math money? Money?
Math?
Money, math. That's what I meant to say. Sorry, the alliteration got me. So that's been a great time. And then, I today was informed of a lovely announcement that Finley's own Dr. DiBenedetto has been selected for the 2019 New York Association of School Psychologists, Suffolk County Chapter School Psychologist of the Year, and she will be going on to the competition for the state recognition, so it's a wonderful honor, and she's a wonderful school psychologist and a wonderful person, so I wanted to congratulate her.
Congratulations to her. Anybody else?
I got one thing.
Yep.
Next week kicks off the Huntington Blue Devils Marching Band Band Camp at Finley Middle School.
You're not at the mic there.
Next week kicks off the Huntington Blue Devils Marching Band Band Camp, the beginning of it, followed by the week after that for the full week of band camp. And on the 25th of August is the parent show at 2 o'clock at Finley Middle School. All are welcome to attend, and I think you'll see the amazing Huntington Blue Devils Marching Band new program for this year in its early stages, but yet amazing nonetheless.
Always a great time.
Love our band.
I have one. Of the other hats that I wear in the community, I serve on the Long Island, on the town task force for the Hispanic community, and a couple of weeks ago, we welcomed Mr. Polansky. Talked about some of the ways that we can collaborate with the community and the schools, and I thought that we are off to a great start. Everybody, when you left, they were grateful that you showed up. You were one of two superintendents that showed up out of the entire Huntington township. They were impressed by you, and they were very happy that you showed up.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be there.
I think that brings us to you.
Okay, a couple of things. First and foremost, I know summer is a time where people think that nothing goes on in school districts, but those of us who are in the trenches here know better. It's a little quieter because the staff and students are not here, but it is actually an extremely busy time. There's a lot going on this summer. Just want to highlight a few things. First of all, we are, I guess I'll say, rudderless a little bit right now on a state level. If you haven't heard, the Commissioner of Education, of the State Education Department Commissioner is on her final few weeks as Commissioner, and there is an interim in place, so there's gonna be some movement up there that is, in some ways, shapes and forms going to impact school districts across the state, and I'm not sure exactly how that's going to play out. The Regents and she have engaged in discussions, and they probably didn't see eye to eye on a number of matters during the last set of meetings in early July. A lot of discussion on such things as alternate diploma pathways and the state of Regents exams influx. I saw something today that there is a new report out that suggests replacing the Regents exams with something like, or if not directly, the SAT and ACT. How that's going to work, I have no idea, but there is a lot to be discussed at the state level that is going to impact what happens here. Earlier in, I'm gonna say late May, I was gonna say earlier in the spring, it was late in the spring, Dr. Loris from the high school and I attended an educator diversity forum at Hofstra University, and a little bit eye-opening in terms of hiring practices and looking to diversify not only hiring but recruiting as well. And interestingly, following that meeting that Xavier just mentioned, I had the pleasure to, with Mr. Hendrick, meet with the president of the, or director of the Long Island Latinx Teachers Association, as well as one of the persons who did the research at Hofstra, kind of identifying much about hiring practices and Long Island as a segregated place in general. It was a, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say it was really a terrific conversation, and we learned a lot, and we're gonna partner, and this is gonna come up when we discuss goals in a few minutes, but I think the more we get ourselves out there and look at what goes on beyond this area, beyond Long Island, and talk about ways where we can broaden our searches and our connections well beyond what's traditionally done, we can set a standard in that regard. And, you know, sometimes just having these conversations or being a part of these meetings can open up different channels of communication that can really do great things for a district and let that district serve as a model for others. So that's what I'm really looking forward to seeing what happens here, not just for us, but for school districts in the area and across Long Island. I just began my stint as the Secretary of the Suffolk County School Superintendent's Association, and honestly, kids are kids, and I want to see every child in this district first and foremost, but across the area really thrive, and the way to do that is to really put educators across the area. Let us serve as an example for others in so many regards that we can really do, we can really do great things together across the board here. So this is just a starting point, but I did want to mention that one meeting leads to another, and conversations then lead to actions, and this is going to be an ongoing project for us, but I know it's gonna result in great things. And along those lines, I don't believe Mrs. Ropel is here tonight, but she's hit the ground running at Finley, and I know she brought a group of her staff members to restorative circles training, and from what I hear, they took to it extremely well, and we're going to expand our practices in that regard to the middle school level, which I think has been a few years coming at this point. We're looking forward to some implementation there as well. So there is a lot going on this summer. We have teachers writing curricula, we have professional development across the board. I keep running into teachers coming in and out of Jack Abrams for various workshops and different types of things that take place over the summer under a slightly less time-constrained situation. The other thing that's obviously going on, if you haven't noticed, there's a lot of capital work taking place throughout the district, so I am actually very excited to bring the board, or take the board on a tour on August 30, when most of that work will be done. No school has been left untouched here. There were roofs going on at Flower Hill, at Southdown, and at Jefferson. I'm sure if you follow us on Facebook, you've seen some of the high school library renovations, which are absolutely gorgeous. We have, you know, little thing, Tom, your roll-up door, all good, all taken care of. A lot of classroom work, asbestos-containing material abatement at Finley. Finley was overhauled this summer, and we're gonna do some work on the Blue Zone to make it a little bit more student-friendly and comfortable for kids. Security vestibules in light of, and.
Yeah.
Acknowledge that. And we can still do that, but in light of some of the tragic events that occurred over the weekend, we do have some of our security work still continuing in our schools. There's just a lot going on, so I certainly encourage you to keep tabs on us via our social media platforms, but also upon the school year beginning, don't hesitate to pat our facilities folks on the back and let them know what a great job they did, because they really have been working their tails off this summer to make sure that everything done is in timely fashion and that the outside contractors are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. And last, I'll mention, the Booster Club camps have been phenomenal this summer, as they always are, and kudos to Brian Stolato and Scope for another phenomenal summer with our summer arts kids and just great programs across the board. School opens on September 4 for kids. Staff come back on September 3. Stay tuned for that letter. I'm gonna hold it for a little while so that you don't get upset with me and my staff folks. But things start to move quickly once this month rolls around. You know that. I don't have to tell you that. That's not a surprise. Calendars should be on their way. The print calendars in the next week or so. Keep an eye out for them. We just got the bulk of them delivered to district office today, and there's a lot going on early in the year. We have our Unity Day Parade, I believe it's on Saturday, September 14, only to be followed by homecoming shortly thereafter. So stick with us, a lot of great things going on, and we are looking forward to a tremendous year ahead. Thank you.
Shall we have a moment of silence right now?
I think we can do that.
In light of, you know, the tragedies that happened over the weekend, if we could all just take a moment of silence to think about the victims and their families, and maybe just think good thoughts for all those who have suffered from that violence. Appreciate it. I'm sorry we have to even do that. All right, so this brings us to public commentary time. Most of you have been here before and know the drill, but I'll just run through it really quick. You are welcome to come and speak at the mic if you're a district resident or an employee or a student. When you come to the mic, please just state your affiliation with the district and your name so that we'll know who you are. We always start our public commentary section with comments that are specifically about the items for discussion and action, which basically are a lot of our policies and our board goals. But if nobody gets up to speak and there's still time left in the 30 minutes, you can then come up and speak about other issues, but we ask that you don't use any personal names of teachers or students. And you have three minutes, and please don't be angry with me if I cut you off. It's, everybody gets the same three minutes. Okay, and with that, I will invite any of our audience to come and speak at the mic if you would like to. All right, there'll be another chance at the end of the meeting. Oh, no, and I, actually, I thought of it too, Jim, and I should have remembered also. Anyway, okay, we are gonna move on to items for discussion and action. Okay, so what we have is the APPR implementation certification for 2018-19. Do you want me to read that?
You want me to make a motion first, then we can.
Okay, so.
Thank you. For discussion, we can discuss first. All right, so very quickly, this is an annual, it has been an annual process for the past few years. The future of the annual professional performance review, the four-letter word APPR, remains somewhat uncertain, as we don't know exactly what kind of directives or changes are going to be imposed by the State Education Department. But at this point, this form is something we filed for the past couple of years. It basically indicates that we will be implementing Educational Law 3012D and the regulations that go along with it in Huntington and have basically followed practice alongside law and regulation. This is a form that can be submitted electronically, but it does have to be endorsed with the blessing of the board by myself and the board president.
Okay, so I'm going to read that resolution. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Huntington School District hereby authorizes and/or ratifies execution by the Superintendent of Schools and the President of the Board of Education the district's 2018-19 APPR implementation certification form. Can I get a motion? Christine, and a second. Michelle, do we have any questions or comments about this? All in favor? That is everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to our Board of Education Goals discussion, which every year is a really good discussion, and I look forward to getting, hearing the input of my fellow trustees. So, let's hit it.
So, what I didn't do, and I actually have, I can distribute these, I kind of got caught in the middle of whether I should put something marked up on the agenda or just leave the, you can cheat. I'll leave the 2018-19 goals as they were, because these are really board goals. They're not my goals.
Right.
What happens here is, once the board adopts goals for the coming year, I then formulate my action plan in response, and then we meet with our administrators, and their action plans follow suit. So we are generally working as one, and obviously, there are specific building goals that they will set alongside the district goals. So there were nine goals last year to speak of. I have made some notes to myself, some suggestions that I'll make to the board, and then we can look at things that maybe we don't have to include as goals anymore because they are somewhat entrenched or completely assimilated into practice at this point. So, what do you have up there? You have the unmarked?
Yeah. This is what we have in front of us.
I mean, this can't hurt.
Yeah, just hand it down. I'll pass it down. Pass it down.
Oh, was that your marked up one? Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Take these.
Do they want? You have one?
Thank you.
So, for example, if you take a look at, and these are completely wide open for discussion, if you take a look at our first goal from 1819, this is somewhat ongoing in nature, and obviously, this is one of our charges as educators in the district. We are living educationally in a time where standards are changing. We are in the midst of transitions in just about every discipline and core discipline and beyond, and that includes guidance and social, emotional, and the arts. It's all, it's all there. A lot of change happening at one time, so some suggestions I made in terms of wording there.
It's much later.
Just transition to new standards and pertinent disciplines while maintaining or expanding opportunities for individual student growth and interest exploration, leading to improved building slash subgroup academic outcomes and cohort graduation rates. So some of the things that I have in mind there is we are looking at expanding our library program to include digital literacy. We are looking at computer science options that haven't existed here in the past, both Project Lead the Way and Advanced Placement. This is the first year that all of our eighth grade students are going to be taking Algebra I. We are looking at potentially new career and technical education options. So just to kind of find a balance between, the word standard makes people shudder sometimes, but to recognize that our kids are kids, and they come from all different backgrounds, all different shapes and sizes, and we've got to appeal to them as individual learners, and we can't ever lose sight of that, so.
And also that education is a living, breathing thing. You know, there are new standards all the time, there's new approaches to education, and we have to be ready to, you know, embrace the best of what's out there and, you know, leave the worst behind and other difference.
So that, I agree with you, and that's one idea, and then I've actually added, and I'll throw in my notes here, and then you guys can take it from there. One of the things that we are looking to do as a district, we feel very important. One of the things that we are looking to do as a district, we feel very important as a school community, as a district community, and really as members of society, we are looking at, starting on Conference Day, and really the foundation has been laid already with a lot of the training and the workshops and conferences that our administrators here have attended, but we are looking to really infuse culturally responsive, transformative learning experiences into our educational practices here. And we are working with some outside people that really we're looking to transition from culturally aware to culturally proficient, and there's a lot of work to do to get from point A to point B, and there are intermediate steps along the way. So that kind of outlines the second goal there in terms of exploring and/or establishing culturally responsive and transformative K-12 learning environments designed to meet the needs of individual learners within a diverse school community. So this reflects a few things, primarily our partnership with generation-ready and other school districts beyond this area that are, we think, maybe a little bit further along than we are. This is going to be, in my mind, what should be one of our overarching goals for this year and beyond. Goal number, the next goal, safety and security is obviously something we can't ever lose sight of, but we also have to recognize that schools can't lose their function as welcoming, safe havens, but welcoming environments for the kids who are in them and the staff that are in them on a daily basis. So in generating a culture that makes our kids, our staff, our other stakeholders feel valued, restorative practices would fit in here. We have a new position in terms of a Director of Safety and Security. And one of the things we've also been talking about this summer is something called an alternative learning center, where we can help, in some cases, we can reduce, we can change consequences, disciplinary consequences, and make them more productive, and also help students who may need additional remediation beyond the standard structure of a school day and provide some innovative types of experiences for them so they can catch up or possibly be enriched. And we have some thoughts and ideas there as to how to set up an intimate environment to help kids through some difficult times and also help to remediate and enrich. So that would be, I guess that would align with number three. For that last goal, the fiscal responsibility, transparent budget process, that's sort of entrenched in our practices at this point, so to keep that there is perfectly fine, or just to look at it as not going away is certainly, you know, something I think we've all accepted at this point. And that would also, I think, apply to engaging in infrastructure hardware application upgrades. That's going to be an ongoing process. We will never be chasing our tails here. We want to stay as ahead of the curve as possible in terms of technology, but also recognize, and this is important and maybe should also be considered as part of a goal, recognizing that technology is a tool, and, you know, if it was all about technology, why would kids need to come to school every day? We can't lose sight of the fact that discussion, conversation, teaching kids how to resolve conflicts, how to interact as human beings, unfortunately in today's society, with the existence of social media and the cloak of anonymity that's attached to it sometimes. Face-to-face conversations should never become a lost art. We can't let that happen here. I alluded to this one before, but in terms of our hiring and retention practices, I don't want to use the word maintain here. I'd like to take it a step further and broaden them, and I think the new contacts we have made, our connection with the Education Trust Organization, we're ready to take that to the next level and post our positions differently and look to reach out in a different manner to make sure that we've left no stone unturned in that regard. The homeschool communication, again, will never not be a goal, but do we want to just roll that over? It's certainly become part of something that we're going to look to push every year. Advocacy efforts, same thing. Do we, that may be one where we pull that out because it's something that's going to happen naturally. The next goal in terms of providing and augmenting relevant and engaging professional learning opportunities designed to support our staff member growth and morale, focusing on differentiation and innovative practices, you know, we discussed this last year, and it should be an overriding task on my end as superintendent to make sure that my staff are as fresh as they can be. There are days that are tough, there are days that are terrific, but I never want them to feel undervalued and under-opportunityed for that matter. And the last goal, I know we have more work to do. Kathy and I have spoken about wellness and upgrading there, and just so many other things have taken precedence over that, and we don't want that to be lost. So those are my seeds planted or watered seeds, and I'll let you guys take it from here.
Okay. Anybody have some input?
I'll jump in.
I'm going to see your notes.
Yeah, I always write notes here. I agree with you, I'm going to jump to your, I guess it would be number seven, I'm looking at the revised one. But with regards to engagement through, further increased parental engagement through the school community, you know, as we're reading some of our board policies, I realize that 8260 is a parental engagement board policy, so it's already built into our policy, so it's sort of redundant to pull it out as a goal. So I agree with you with that. Something you did say that resonates with me is the reliance on use of personal technology. As much as we want our children to learn through computers, I don't know how many of you go out to dinner and see kids on their computers at the dinner tables. I mean, to me, in my family, it's unacceptable, and I don't want to impose on people's families, but I think that we have to reach a breakpoint where we're going to have to say, maybe children shouldn't have phones or readily accessible technology. Maybe we need to incorporate a way to develop their interpersonal skills, to develop the way that they write, because I interview brand-new lawyers to come work for me at my office, and I'm just noticing that over time, the writing skills are decreasing. You know, nobody likes to write anymore. You know, to hire an appellate attorney in my office took me almost two years to find somebody that not only could write, but wanted to write. So we're losing that skill, and I don't know that it's specifically because we're spending too much time, or kids are spending too much time on their personal devices. It's great, my kids know how to use personal devices better than I do, but is that really something that I want to show on a college application?
Well, not to the exclusion of personal contact and the ability to work collaboratively with somebody in front of you, and certainly not to the detriment of, I mean, the kids need to develop, they certainly are going to need the technology skills because obviously this, we're a world now that's obsessed with technology and all the latest in that, but it should never be to the detriment of the interpersonal relationships of kids between students, but also kids with their teachers. I think it's really, really important, the connection kids have to their teachers. I'm looking at you, Ms. Fisher, because all three of my kids loved you, and it made a huge difference in their lives at primary school. So, you know, I really do, I really feel that's a huge value.
Some of the things that you had brought up last year, towards the end of the year, where we're bringing in some of these SAT prep courses, I like that. I think that that's a great selling point. When people look into our district and they look at our goals and they looked at we're getting kids ready to not only get into schools, but excel and get into some of the best schools, that's a great selling tool for real estate brokers. That's a great selling point for people that are looking to enter our district. It's hard to take that SAT sometimes, and to help them get ready in high school, that's a phenomenal thing. I think you're on point with a lot of the things that you're suggesting here, as always. I think it's great, and I like the initiative that you're going to be taking on at Conference Day, and I'm going to do everything I can to be there, but you're heading in the right direction. I really believe that. We are, and you and your staff are, and I applaud you for that.
Can I add something to what Xavier said about kids and devices? One of the things I'm noticing is, in addition to that, is media literacy. So, you know, my kids look something up on Wikipedia and they think that it's.
Yeah, that's true.
Fact. But I find that with a lot of, like, friends and families, that kids don't know how to find the right sources of information, and where would media literacy be as a goal? I think it's really important.
I have that jotted down alongside the first goal there as part of individual student growth and interest exploration, but something, or it could probably be attached to number two as well, transformative K through 12 learning environment. But one of the benefits of our library program expansion is going to be the expansion of digital literacy curriculum. It's going to be something that is not going to be lost.
That's great.
We had, and I should have mentioned this before, we had a number of teachers this summer, and Beth, jump in here, ten, a media literacy workshop slash conference at SUNY Stony Brook. That was the outcome of one of my superintendent meetings earlier in the year where I met.
Howie.
Howard, Howard Schneider.
Howie Schneider.
No. He is the dean of the School of Media Literacy, and if I have the title of the school wrong, forgive me, at Stony Brook and a number of school districts, not many, but a handful have signed on as partners, and we are there as well just to gather as much information as possible, and I think we're going to infuse this into our high school social studies curriculum.
One of the curriculum alignment proposals that will be forthcoming is to integrate what was learned over the summer into the participation in government curriculum, so that all students that take that course will have the opportunity to learn this critical information. So we're very excited about that, and that'll be forthcoming.
That is really exciting. I actually was, one of the suggestions that I wanted to make, and, you know, in this day and age, and maybe it's a dangerous road to tread, but maybe it's the most important thing we could do is, and I'm not saying that we set a great example, but boy, would it be valuable for our kids to learn some civil discourse and to learn how to, you know, have conversations across the table about things that are difficult to discuss without becoming personal and angry and ugly. And I think, you know, in many ways, we've moved away from that kind of curriculum from when I was a kid, you know, we've come away from it, and I think in some ways that's too bad.
Civics is now a required component of the high school curriculum in general, and I will say that we have some spectacular educators at the high school that have made a point to make sure that these opportunities are there for kids on a curricular and an extracurricular basis. Mr. Levy and Mr. Donovan arranged, have arranged for the past couple of years, that youth forum where, listen, the issues that were selected for conversation, you know, sometimes I don't feel like I should be there because I don't want it to stifle the conversation, but I don't stop them. They just, they'll go right around me, and that's, but they do it in the right way. We could learn something from them sometimes as adults.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying we set a great example, but I'd sure like to see them do better than we've done.
You always send them to join the mock trial team, teach them how to argue.
There you go. Little bump for the mock trial.
Well, and how you've talked before about, you know, debate at Finley, like, doing something in the lower grades, like a debate club or some kind of skill.
And actually, there was some discussion about a debate club at the high school, not for, you know, my first question there is, well, why don't they just go out for the mock trial team? But not every child wants the experience there and may not be looking to become an attorney and may not want, I mean, that's, it's a phenomenal program, but it's a different type of debate that they're looking for. And I can tell you, these kids will speak their mind, and you want to talk civil discourse, I've seen students at the high school do this the right way. I've seen it outside of the high school, in the world of adults, not in the right way. But this is something that we will make a commitment, continued commitment, to making sure that our kids understand what civics is and how it can be implemented on a productive basis.
That's great.
I would have to agree with one point Xavier was making about students and their electronic devices at very young ages, and that it's troubling because I think it's also adding to the inability to stay focused on task. Call it attention deficit disorder, call it whatever you want, but the reality is, is that there's a number of things they're not able to do because if you're on these devices at a very young age, you're, something pops up here, something pops up there, there's always some type of instant gratification coming your way. And at a very young age, you're going to find that, oh, I want to go over here, I want to go over here, and you can't stay focused on task. Now, I don't know how we address that because it's almost impossible, but one thought I was having, and I don't know, maybe we do something similar to this, is, is there an age that we identify that it's, there's a way to get them to have better study habits?
There is a movement out there, I don't know if I'd call it a program, but somebody had shared it with me via email in the spring, it's, and I think it was highlighted in one of the local publications, called Wait Until Eighth.
Wait till eighth.
I don't know what the age is, and I've seen kids in the primary schools with phones, I've seen kids in the middle school whose parents say, no, you're not getting those phones. It's hard, you know, we're not in a position certainly to tell parents what to do, but, one of our parents did ask me, would we consider marketing this wait until eighth message and the things that go with it? And I'm not opposed to it. I think we need to come across carefully as not trying to make decisions for parents, but I was fortunate enough to see a presentation made by Dr. Memoli, who is a psychologist that lives in district. She made a presentation to Flower Hill parents, and a lot of this was addressed in terms of what's appropriate for kids and what's not appropriate for kids. And listen, every child is different, every family is different, every set of expectations is different. But I think, you know, as I look at that fifth goal to incorporate something in there that suggests that we reinforce that technology is not an end unto itself, that it is a tool to reach goals, and I've had these conversations with teachers where they do some phenomenal things with technology, and my first question is, did that add to the student's achievement of the goal, or did it just repeat something you did already and succeeded with in a different way? And those are the kinds of questions we need to ask ourselves as educators. Is the device the best means of accomplishing that goal in this regard? In some cases it is, and in some cases it's very convenient to have Google Classroom and not to distribute the word packet, drives me nuts. Do we need packets anymore? Probably not, because we have technology that allows us to avoid that, but are there things that we can discuss instead of immediately going toward a device? You know, there's no right or wrong answer here, but I think there's things that we can certainly help kids and families to understand better.
And just going back to the study portion of it, right, teaching good study habits to kids, because the reality is, a lot of these kids go home, maybe there's a parent home, maybe there's not a parent home. Have they been instilled with the right tools? And I'm, I don't know, and that's our responsibility, but ultimately it's going to reflect on the teachers, it's going to reflect on.
Make their own study guides, things like that.
Right, all those kinds of things that will make them successful after they're out of this district. So I don't, again, I don't know the answers to those questions, and I don't know how we put it into a goal, but it's more of, I guess, a challenge to figure out how we provide those kinds of tools to make them successful.
You know, it's tough, and as a former high school teacher myself, I remember trying to find that line between what constitutes too much hand-holding and is not going to help them in the long run, and letting go of the reins and letting them learn from there. We have to let them learn from their mistakes. We do have a social studies teacher at the high school who teaches, we have a number of teachers who teach based on what we're in Socratic seminar format, where the reading is assigned, it's your responsibility to do the reading, and then you're going to come back in prepared to discuss it, and if you don't do the reading and you try and skirt around that, you're not going to do well on the end of unit assessments. And the kids learn very quickly what a college environment is like, but sometimes that transition is tougher for some than others. So it's a process. It is a process.
It needs to be taught earlier than high school, obviously. I mean, if you're really going to teach study skills, you almost want to be teaching them at the Woodhull Jack Abrams level so that they don't develop bad study skills, and that has to be undone. You know, it's the kind of thing, I think, you teach them early how to sit down, how to organize, what needs to be covered, how to, and, you know, you know, by high school, I think it's too late.
Even the primary schools, and I know, I'm looking about as far as I can see, Ms. Johansson's sitting out there, and her push throughout the district for project-based learning, and I know that's been a focus here, but trying to spread that more throughout the district so that kids understand that you don't need a cookbook. You can, you can think through something without handing somebody a list of steps that really make it more rote than project-based, inquiry-based learning. And I can tell you that I have, I mean, the people that we have in our classrooms and leading those people in our classrooms are passing along the right ideas. It's just, it's a process, and we really have to, we've got to push a little bit harder to get kids to that point. It's just an interesting time that we live in.
I just wanted to add that with regards to study skills and note-taking, that was something that when we kind of wrote the library curriculum last year, when we just had the one period every other week at the primary levels, we did include that, and we did observe lessons. I know I observed lessons with the librarians working with students on that. And as we're revising the curriculum for next year to include the second period, those are certainly skills that will be added into that program.
That's great.
So I just, and that will be primary through high school, so.
Wonderful.
Just wanted to be aware of that.
I'm glad to hear that. All right, my friends, anybody else have some comments?
Could I add one more thing?
Sure.
One, two more things. One, I think that, Tom, you hit it on the head when you start talking about that whole FOMO, fear of missing out. It definitely rises the level of anxiety in kids when they think they missed a text, they missed an Instagram message that their friends put out there. So trying to investigate how responsible use of personal technology is maybe something that we would want to look into before we start to try to teach people or teach kids how to use it is an idea, maybe something we can add to number five. But when we look at some of the parental engagement, some of the articles that you've sent us in the past, Jim, have related to community-based education or community-based organizations that partner with educational, so that you're providing several services, and this way you attract more people to the educational process, something we might want to think about.
So in talking about possibly taking that one out, that, I realize it's a policy that we just talked about in our policies, but putting it in the goal, keeping it in the goals, I feel like it just highlights it publicly.
Number seven.
Number seven, yeah. That it highlights it publicly, that if someone looks at our goals as what's important to us. goals as what's important to us, they, because that is one of the most important things, I think, to everybody on the board.
And I think that's why we've rolled some of these over, because, you know, removing it, we don't want it to suggest that it's not important to us anymore. But I think Bill made the comment last year that, you know, we should be focusing on what, what's new for 1920, because I believe last year we had, not last year, but the year before, we had 13 goals, and that's, I mean, I asked my administrators, I mean, I follow suit, but I asked them to give me three or four, because once you start to get past that number, it becomes overwhelming. And not that this is a little bit different, but, and Policy 8260 we're going to talk about very shortly, but that really is more related to Title I specifically, so we could open that up to more community-based partnership.
Yeah, I think it could be expanded or reworded, but I, the idea of it, I feel like it's important to keep it as a highlight.
I was going to say the same thing, actually.
Moving the digital literacy down to number five may work, based on what I'm hearing from Xavier and Tom. And that's, that's a thought that runs through my mind all the time about technology, that it's, it's, it's a low-hanging fruit, and it, the day, the days are gone where technology in itself is, is what everybody needs to be all about, because we're missing the boat on, on other things, and that's why now we're talking about device-free time and free play and chances for kids to be kids, which don't exist as often as they used to.
Well, and that, you know, last year, when we were talking about the goals, I was all, you know, wanting to put in the extracurricular thing in there somewhere, and that was one of the, one of the reason, one of the reasons is because that is a time when kids usually put their devices away. When they're playing sports, you can't catch a ball when you have your phone, you know, when you can't act on the stage with your phone in your hands, you know, so.
And why things like the arts and sports and other opportunities that we provide for kids, we call them extracurricular, but in some ways, they're as important as anything else, because they're making our kids into well-rounded human beings.
No doubt. I, I, you know, we'll just close by saying that I actually agree with you, Christine, I would like to see all of them left in here, because I think that when I look at each one, I really feel genuinely that it is a goal of this board, and truthfully, the one about enhanced district communications, number five, I agree, while it's a policy and we don't necessarily have to have it in there, I do think it's really important, and I would like to see us every year take more steps forward in finding other ways to reach our community, particularly members of our community who we haven't quite reached yet. So I don't think we're done, you know, I feel like it would be nice, I think it's important that it stays. Anybody else? All right, well, we're not voting on this, obviously, so we are going to...
So what I will do is, I'm looking at 10 goals here, I will manipulate them, I will reformat them based on some of the ideas that came up at the table this evening, and I will put them in either this week's, yeah, this week's, I'll try and have, I will have it for you on Wednesday in the update.
That sounds good. And I'm sure if any of us think of another comment, we'll email you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if anybody comes up with other things, questions, you know, input.
Basically, two choices here, we can, we'll put them on the agenda again.
Yep.
August 26th, you can either adopt them then, or we can go through one more tweaking period, and you can adopt them at the first...
Usually takes us a couple of times.
We'll have our other two trustees here, too, and I think that's important.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to go through a bunch of board policies now, and so I think when we, you know, read them, Jim will explain to us, you know, what the changes are and all of that, most of them are first read, but...
They're all first read.
All of them, okay, but if we feel compelled, we can...
So Christine, Xavier, Christine and I went through these in as narrow a timeframe as possible this afternoon before the executive session, and that's some things that I'm going to look into before the next meeting. There are a couple of required policies here that I'll point out, but we also talked about policy committee meetings maybe once a month so that we don't have this many on the agenda at one time, and all agreed.
Okay.
And I'm not going to make all the comments that I made in Policy 8260, because Jim already knows them, so.
No, you definitely don't have to. Absolutely. But if there's anything you really feel is pertinent, just...
What I'll suggest here, if you haven't read them, in the context of why the changes are being made, that you do that between now, and you can always communicate with me between the, between the two meetings.
It's a little case of me, because I have absolutely no access to the main, so.
It's not an excuse.
It's going to have to be. It is upon recommendation, I should say, first thing we're doing is Board Policy 1334, duties of the extracurricular classroom fund, central treasurer, and faculty auditor. So it's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 1334, duties of the extracurricular classroom fund, central treasurer, and faculty auditor. Can I get a motion? Christine, in a second. Xavier.
So this has been revised as an existing policy that has not been touched for, for some time. It's been revised to reflect the contents of New York State Education Department Finance pamphlet that guides safeguarding, accounting, and auditing of extra classroom activity funds. This is also an area that could be the subject of an audit, so there are, we think of faculty, we think of club advisors, but this also highlights the role of the central treasurer, three of whom were appointed at the last meeting, one of whom will be appointed tonight, in the faculty auditor position, which would add another layer of, of protection and oversight.
That's a little policy, too. Okay, so we had a motion, in a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Jim?
And during the policy committee meeting, there was a couple of things that they suggested that we just get clarified.
Okay, very good. So, all in favor of the first read? We have to vote on the first read, right, or no?
Basically, we're acknowledging that there's a policy that needs to be revised here, and that we're going to look further into it between now and the next meeting. This is not to be implemented. Anything that is ultimately board-adopted, I will then have to bring to my administrators to make sure that everybody understands what procedural changes will follow.
Okay, so that's going to be true of most of these or all of these, that we're going to issue just initial first approval of the revised policy. So we had a motion, in a second. All in favor?
Voting on it as a first read?
Yeah, first read.
Yeah. I know, I wasn't quite sure myself at first, but...
Technically, if the board were to not approve a first read, you'd be saying, just leave the policy as is, we don't want to move further with it.
Right, now, so we want to see it revised. Okay, well, this is Board Policy 5520, Administrative Regulation 5520-R, extra classroom activities funds, this is obviously related. It's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, initial first read approval of revised policy 5520, extra classroom, that's such a weird, extra classroom activities funds, shouldn't it be extracurricular, extra classroom?
That's actually called extra, extra classroom activity, I don't know if it should be plural.
Okay, okay, so activity fund. All right, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, in a second. Michelle, okay.
So this goes along with the prior, based on that 2019 stated finance pamphlet, and some of the language that we discussed is similar to Policy 1334.
All good, does anybody have any questions or comments about this? All in favor? And we're moving on. Board Policy 5681, school safety plans. It's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 5681, school safety plans. Can I get a motion?
Okay.
I got Christine, and I got Xavier.
So this is based on new law and regulations that, some of which has already changed, so this is probably going to change again relatively soon. I'll give you one example of that. In it, it says that building level filing of these plans on a district-wide and building-wide level has to happen 30 days after adoption. That is already changed, now the deadline is October 1st. So this reflects, our plan was, was not, was not current at all, this does make it much more current, but until, and some other changes have come down, it's going to, they're going to need to be reflected in school policy and practices, so this has likely to morph a few times between now and the end.
These are the school safety plans that Kathy put together, that you, that whole...
Well, it's, it's, it's more than one person, there have to be...
Right, but I mean, the ones that she had, right, brought to our...
Correct, so those will likely be on the agenda on the September, end of September.
End of September.
Yep.
Very good. All right, does anybody have questions or comments about this particular one? All in favor? Thank you.
Practice has actually been in place with an antiquated policy.
Okay, that's because I was going to say, no, we had to submit it, and it was huge, I remember, you gave the...
Remember that law, law and regulations supersede policy, so just because our policy was not updated does not give us...
Follow it along.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, okay. So we're up to Board Policy 5741, which is drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. It's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 5741, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. Let me get a motion.
Motion.
Tom, in a second. Xavier.
So this, in long story short, has been amended to reflect changes in vehicle and traffic laws, specific section mentioned there, you have the summary as, as does the public if they wish to read it, and anything that is changed or adjusted in this policy will be communicated to Huntington Coach. A lot of the language which may...
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not strictly them.
It's a little bit similar language. Yes, they, they would have to do this testing.
Yeah, they're the ones that are going to have to really comply with this, really just need to make sure that it's being done, is that the deal?
Correct, and, and communication between district and contracted service providers. So this, this policy actually takes on two different formats. One, if the, if the district has its own transportation, and the other, if the district contracts its transportation services out.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions for Jim about this? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, this is Board Policy 6212, certification and qualifications, Administration Forms 6212-F and 6212-F1, parent right to request teacher qualifications and parental notice regarding uncertified teacher. Okay, sorry, let's get a motion. Xavier, in a second. Christine, thank you.
This has been cleaned up more than anything else. A lot of what's expressed here is already done. At the beginning of every year, we send letters home to parents, they have the right to request their teacher's qual, as child's teacher's qualifications. And then that, that other form, by the way, the board doesn't really have to approve forms, but I also want you to know what's going into the Administrative Regulation Manual, parent notification regarding an uncertified teacher in a classroom for more than four weeks. That has not been sent out recently, primarily because we have not had a teacher in that situation, that's something we avoid, we have avoided, period. And any other changes here reflect, as a requirements that have come up recently.
Does anybody have anything to say on this one? All right, all those in favor? First read? Great, thank you. This is administrative form, administrative form 7242-F, military recruiters and the IHE access to certain information in opt-out form.
Don't need a motion here, it's just a form change. This form is a little bit more elaborate, giving parents a little bit more information about what we need to do as a district and, and how we can assist them if they wish to opt out of providing directory information to military recruiters, and this form will be in both, available in both English and Spanish.
Great. Okay, so we don't need to vote on that. Did anybody have any questions for Jim about that? All right, pushing on. Board Policy 7314, student acceptable use policy. So it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 7314, student acceptable use policy.
We can read the description there?
It's about technology, I'll read it. The policy title and con, oh, let me get the motion first, sorry. Let me get a motion. Okay, Michelle, in a second, this is Xavier. Should I read so that people understand what it means, acceptable use, or you want to just explain?
It's all about the fact that we, as a district now, and I believe we've entered into these already, there is a signed agreement between student, family, and district in terms of the acceptable use of district technologies. And that's, again, really, don't look at it as, as a disciplinary situation, it's more to protect our kids than anything else. Anybody that, anybody that uses our Wi-Fi is well aware of the fact that you really can't access anything harmful, and that's also why the next policy is going to, to kick in as well.
Do you want my daughter's description of what you can access?
That's the language we're trying to keep from access.
It's a family meeting, Christine.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so we had a motion, in a second. All those in favor? First read, thank you.
Don't tell her.
Oh, what do you tell her? She stays in this room. Okay, so this is the corresponding policy, Board Policy 7316, student use of personal technology. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 7316, student use of personal technology. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I got Tom and Christine, if anything to add further, I mean...
So 7314 really addresses student use of district-provided technologies, and then 7316 has to do with use of their own technologies and what's appropriate and what's not.
All right, does anybody have anything to say, add, ask?
Read through that, obviously, it's, it's a new, that is a new policy, so if there's anything there that, that you have questions on or that's of concern, don't hesitate to bring it up.
It talks about where and when and how.
That's, and this is a big, those are big questions, truthfully, in an educational arena now.
Things have changed.
Yeah, things have changed. It used to be, yeah, he could collect the phones.
Yeah, don't, don't show your phone anywhere in the school building, and now you have teachers saying, take your phones out and use it for, and honestly, that, that's okay as long as it's done in the right circumstances.
Well, and that's why it should be laid out very clearly, so that there's no question for the students or the teachers about when that is or isn't appropriate and how it is or isn't appropriate. All right, so we had a motion, in a second, didn't we?
We did.
All those in favor? Sorry, I'm straight off a trip from Maine, I feel like a little... Board Policy 7410, extracurricular activities, Administrative Regulation 7410-R1, extracurricular activities guidelines. Okay, so it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 7410, extracurricular activities. Can I get a motion? Michelle, in a second, from Xavier.
So this is also somewhat aligned with those two policies from above 1334 and 5520. This talks a little bit more about establishing and maintaining extracurricular activities in the context of the building that they're in. 7410-R dot one, there are multiple regulations that go along with that, the only one that we touched here for the purposes of reflecting the revised policy is that one. A little different here, it talks about eligibility for attendance, standards, title that, it's, it's titled censorship, that, that actually is not a new adjustment, but our policy was somewhat dated, so that was probably part of a revision from several years ago. Also talks about limited open forum, and I think it does it in a, in a manner that, that students as well as, as staff can understand in terms of the boundaries of extracurricular participation, as well as the activities that can be conducted by a group.
Great. It's important, actually. Does anybody have anything they would like to add or ask? All those in favor? Okay. Okay, so we are up to Board Policy 7530, child abuse and maltreatment, Administrative Regulation 7530-R2, child abuse in an educational setting and prohibition of silent resignations. So it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 7503, child abuse and maltreatment.
Oops, that should be 7530, sorry.
Seven, okay, so that's reverse, sorry, so let me read, it's the approval of revised policy 7530, child abuse and maltreatment. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, in a second. Xavier.
Real quick, Article 23B of education law changed, and to reflect those changes, we need to change this policy. This is a required policy that changes, increase the types of people who are now designated as mandated reporters, and it also requires greater change, greater training for those reporters.
And it sounds like it redefines what an educational setting is, so that it includes, you know, I'm just kind of skimming through, like, transportation and when they're not necessarily in a school building, but still in school.
Correct, like a school bus driver, et cetera. We do have a plan in terms of our employees for that training, and I had to do this in a comprehensive but least intrusive manner.
Yep. All right, anybody else have anything to say? All those in favor? Great, thank you, everybody. Getting there, okay. This is, oh, the administrative form, so we're not going to have to vote on this, right? This is 7580F, Dignity for All Students Act Complaint Form. So this is a revised form for the Dignity for All Students Act.
Honestly, this is a very simple one, because this is a form that we have been using, we We just decided that it belonged in the Administrative Regulations Manual. Ms. McCoy oversees, she's our district-level dignity act coordinator, and she does a fine job, and she helped design this form.
Great, and we've been using it anyway, is that what you're saying? So now it's just gonna kinda be officially, okay, added in.
Now there's no guessing games.
But we do not have to vote on it. Wonderful. Board Policy 8260, Title 1 Parent and Family Engagement. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 8260, Title 1 Parent and Family Engagement. Can I get a motion? Michelle, and a second from Xavier.
So Xavier mentioned this before, this is parent and family engagement. It reflects or relates to Title 1 because we are required to do this if we are to be able to submit our consolidated application for our Title 1 funding. But what you see in this policy is going to apply to our efforts in terms of parent and family engagement across the board, and it does kind of expand on the previous policy and puts us in a place where I think we can, we can do more.
Excellent. Did you wanna add anything to that?
No, no, I think.
All right, anybody else? All those in favor? Thank you, and finally, Board Policy 8271, Internet Safety, Internet Content Filtering. So, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of revised policy 8271, Internet Safety, Internet Content Filtering. Let me get a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Tom, and a second from Christine.
So I know Kathy can speak to this, but very simple terms here. We need this policy in place, revised as it is to maintain our E-rate funding, which is not a small pool of money.
All right, so, but we can still just vote on first read for this?
Yes, I think we have till October, Kathy, to do this.
The end of September.
End of September.
Okay, so at the next meeting would be okay? So we can still just vote on the first read of this?
She was just a little concerned because we didn't have another policy committee meeting formally scheduled, at least at that point, so.
Money.
And it does address, as it mentions, internet safety, protection of technologies. Data privacy is a huge, huge focus of pretty much every district at this point. We now have a new data privacy officer, so now that kinda factors in here as well.
So can I get a motion? Xavier, a second, Christine. Anybody have anything to add?
I have a question. With something like this, Jim, and this just popped into my head, when kids bring their own devices to the school, they can basically hop on the school's Wi-Fi, correct?
Yep.
Or they can hop on anything they want to outside of that if they're not on the Wi-Fi. Is there any requirement that says that while on school premises, any devices have to be basically connected to the district's filtering, in other words?
Because. Not a requirement per se, but that also feeds back into policy 7316, appropriate use of personal technologies. So if they get into something they shouldn't, we can address it through that policy.
Actually, can they attach to the Wi-Fi on their phones? I don't think that they do.
They, I don't believe they can, actually.
I don't think they can.
Because they would have to use district devices, which they all have, so they'd have to use their Chromebooks if they're going. And then one of the complaints that I will often get is that if they are going through their phone, they are eating up their data plan very quickly.
Or hotspot or whatever.
But if they're not on Wi-Fi and they're using a personal device, we have no, there's no Go Guardian in place, so they have access to whatever they would access.
I just didn't know if there's any way of restricting them while on school premises from going outside of the.
More along the lines of board policy and code of conduct. You know, we don't, the only way to do that, and we actually asked that question, is you'd have to put some sort of mechanism in place where it would block LTE networks and 3G, 4G, 5G, and obviously, in this day and age, we don't wanna cut off communication from the outside, so we didn't, we didn't look any further. That's a good question.
Anybody else? All right, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
That was very well done. All right, so this brings us to CSE, CPSE, Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve CSE, CPSE submissions as delineated.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, and a second, Christine, all those in favor? Excellent, all right. Mr. Polanski, we're right back at you.
Okay, personnel, I am asking the board for approval of items on schedules 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 15, 16, and 22.
One of my favorite times in the night. All right, let's get a motion. Christine, and then a second from Tom. Does anybody have anything that we need to? Nope, all right, all those in favor? Sorry, I'm speaking in sentence fragments tonight, I just realized.
Okay, I have a load of announcements, and I can't really see that far. I see Jill, I see Karen, I see Carol. But I'm just gonna go through all the names here, and I know some people could not make it. Summer is, as I mentioned, a time where often a good deal of hiring takes place. So on Schedule 3, we have a number of new teachers that we are welcoming. We did have some concerns that we'd be able to fill all of our library positions. We reposted, and we reposted again, and the last wave did us, did us, did us well. I'll leave it at that. So we welcome to the district, new elementary librarian, Elizabeth Bromley. I don't know if she's here, there she is. I know for a fact I can't see that far. Sheila Darty Ganessa also joining us over there, welcome Sheila. We have them all mapped out where we felt best fit. You're all gonna be very happy with your placements. Also, in the world of librarians, Sari Goldhaber. I can't see Elizabeth, no way I can see back there. Joining us in the high school guidance department, I know she's not here tonight, she's away, but we welcome Evelyn Hernandez. Not new to the district, but new to the position. She will take over as the dean of the Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School, Jessica Mora Rivera. That's here tonight. Excited to have her. Joining us in the high school science department, Melissa Sorrentino. And the new dean at Woodhull Intermediate School, and I know Dr. Gonzalez has been eagerly awaiting this appointment, Mr. Julian Watts. And I think for those that have been here with us recently, we know that Part 100 regulations have now expanded our requirements in terms of guidance. So we have hired a part-time, a half-time school counselor for the 6th grade, so we welcome Ivy Alveiero. And also, new to us, working in art capacity at Huntington High School. I think I see her, if I'm looking correctly, just, yeah, you go, Jennifer Faison. These two have been with us already. Okay, the other, I'm just making sure if I miss anything, somebody come up here and give me a shot in the arm or in the head, whatever works. All right, I'm gonna move to Schedule 9. What we do in Huntington, and all of these people received a communication from me, we do a little celebration, this year it'll be on September 24th to honor those who have been recently tenured in Huntington. We don't take these recommendations or appointments lightly. I did invite these people to be here tonight, we're going to celebrate in September, but I did want to acknowledge that the board has just approved their appointment. They actually earned it upon entering the building on the first day in September. So just earning tenure in Huntington, we have a list. And the reason the list is a little bit long is because we, these people fell in between the law-changing three- and four-year tenure period. So this would actually represent two years' worth under normal circumstances. So we welcome to the ranks of Huntington-tenured faculty, social worker, Navila Arman. Physical education teacher, Marissa Bergman. Guidance counselor, Diana Bonilla. Social studies teacher, Sarah Buckhalter. A wave, so at least, there you go. Sarah, not even, not even close, can I? I can't even see.
And it's dark back there.
And it's dark back there. Elementary teacher after dual language, Christina Campagnoli. English Language Arts, she's been, I think, at both Finley Emma High School, and I think she's moving into the AP Seminar, AP Research realm, if I'm not mistaken, Allison Capewell. If I made a mistake there, Allison, you can just kick me at the end of this. Elementary teacher, Flower Hill, Ally Conlon. World Languages at the High School, Natalia Herrera. Art at the middle school at Finley, Dina Mortel. Science Physics at the High School, Amelia Sajis. Math at Finley Middle School, Abigail Simon. Art at the High School, our fashion program, and she's close enough where I can see her, Kim Valerio. Science at the High School, Tom Van Bell. And last but not least, Special Education, I believe at multiple elementary levels, certainly, I know she's been at Woodhull, Justine Vons. Feel like this is either a classroom or conference day where people load up those back rows. Congratulations to all of you, we will celebrate with you in September.
Congratulations. Okay, Dr. Eckert, that brings us to you, and I'm going to ask you to just pull one thing to be voted on separately, and that would be L-30.
L-30?
Yeah, because we have one trustee who is going to abstain from that.
That sounds like a high number, L-30.
L-30.
Bingo.
Okay. I mean, yeah, that's, that's.
All right, let's see how I could word this.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve items, I through.
Good luck.
L-29.
29.
And, and L-31.
31 through 33. M-N-N-O.
Okay.
No, M-N-N.
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 Did we all follow that? All right, can I get a motion? Christine, and a second. Xavier, does anybody have anything to say? All right, all in favor? Thank you, and now we'll do L-30.
This is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve item L-30 on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, can I get a motion for that one?
It's a new affiliation, correct?
Christine, and a second, Michelle, okay, all those in favor?
I have seen.
And we have one extension. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Eckert. Just throwing you a curveball, just to make sure you're awake.
Last but a curveball, especially when the agenda's huge, right?
Right, exactly. Okay, so actually, that brings us to our second public commentary, and same rules apply, if anybody would like to come to the mic? Terrific. I shouldn't say that out loud. I'm really, I'm tired, so pardon that. Comments by board members, I feel similarly about these. Anybody have anything to say?
Maybe.
Gonna think about it for a while, Tom? All right, that brings us, I need a motion to adjourn. Tom and Christine, all those in favor? Thank you, everybody, get home safely. I guess you shouldn't thank the audience when they tell you. They don't wanna come to the mic.